The Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, or LADOTD, on behalf of HWA, prepared an environmental assessment, or EA, for capacity improvements to Interstate 10, or I-10, from Louisiana Highway 415, or LA 415, in West Baton Rouge Parish to the I-10 Interstate 12, or I-12 split, near Essent Lane and East Baton Rouge Parish. The intent of the proposed project is to reduce congestion and improve overall traffic flow along the corridor. This public hearing is to present the findings of the environmental assessment, or EA, prepared for State Project H.004100, I-10 LA 415 to Essent Lane on I-10 and I-12, and receive your comments. This is an open house public hearing with information stations and project team members available for questions. This prerecorded presentation will run continuously throughout the open house. A court reporter will be present to receive statements during the open forum and statement hour. The statement hour will be from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., whereby those wishing to speak publicly will be provided a microphone and an opportunity to share with those in attendance. Should you wish to speak, please visit the sign-in desk to fill out a speaker's form. This is a DOD project, and I-10 is a federal highway, so the Federal Highway Administration is also providing oversight on this project. The Capital Region Planning Commission, or CRPC, our regional metropolitan planning organization, is providing technical assistance to the project team. The U.S. Coast Guard is a cooperating agency for this project as the Mississippi River Bridge is permitted by the U.S. Coast Guard. To begin, the I-10 project study area spans the I-10 corridor from the west side of the Mississippi River at LA 415 in West Baton Rouge Parish to the east side of the river to I-10 and I-12 at Essent Lane in East Baton Rouge Parish. The feasibility stage, or Stage Zero, was completed. This project is currently in Stage One of DOD's project delivery process, the planning and environmental phase. Stage One is nearing completion with the notice of availability of the environmental assessment, or EA, and these public hearings. As stated, the Stage Zero feasibility study has been completed. Public meetings for the Stage One Planning/Environmental Analysis occurred in 2018. The Planning and Environmental Analysis is aimed at determining the effects of the project's alternatives, determining the least damaging alternative that meets the project purpose and need, and developing corridor enhancement suggestions, all of which are compiled in the environmental assessment, or EA. There are two nights of public hearings to share the findings of the EA. The announcement for these hearings was provided with the notice of availability of the EA. After the public hearings, comments will be considered and revisions to the Proposed Project Incorporated for final approval. Stage One was initiated on the base concept for I-10 resulting from the feasibility study stage, to add a travel lane in each direction from LA 415 to Essent Lane, with the exception of the Mississippi River Bridge, along with interchange modifications as needed to accommodate traffic. This concept was presented at the public meetings during the feasibility stage and again during the round of public meetings held for Stage One. The base concept minimizes impact to adjacent properties by widening to the inside wherever possible. The base concept incorporated other improvements, such as the provision of adequate shoulders as practicable and noise barriers. Current congested traffic conditions on I-10 are the result of inadequate aging infrastructure and increased travel demand. The average daily traffic is approximately 130,000 to 160,000 vehicles per day, almost double the design capacity, of which 8 to 15% is freight. The average daily traffic is expected to grow by 1% annually for the next 20 years. Additional travel lanes in each direction are proposed to improve congestion and travel time within the area. The additional lanes will increase capacity as shown on the following slide. This slide presents theoretical capacity. I-10 currently exceeds theoretical capacity and will continue to exceed theoretical capacity for the next 20 years. The exhibit compares the present-day configuration of I-10 with three travel lanes in each direction with the proposed configuration of four travel lanes. Each travel lane can carry up to 1,950 vehicles per hour, or VPH, which equates to 5,850 VPH in each direction for the existing I-10 corridor. Adding a fourth travel lane will increase the capacity up to 7,800 VPH in each direction. The previous slides demonstrate the purpose and need for this project, to improve overall system operation of I-10 through the Baton Rouge area by relieving congestion, improving operations, and extending the useful life of this section of I-10. The concepts studied in the EA with the goal to meet the purpose and need included: one additional lane to be added to the main line in each direction; and potential interchange modifications at I-10 and LA 415, LA 1, Washington, Dalrymple, Perkins, Acadian, College, and the I-10-I-12 split; and the option of no improvements, or not to build. During the alternative screening, all alternatives for LA 415 were removed from this project as this interchange will be handled as a separate project. Of the three interchange concepts considered for Acadian Thruway, ramp lengthening was determined to result in the least right-of-way acquisition and therefore the least impact while still providing the necessary traffic improvement. Not building any improvements did not meet the project's defined purpose and need and was therefore not advanced as part of the identified preferred alternative. A preferred alternative, or the project, was identified in the alternatives analysis. More specifically, the project has the following attributes: In West Baton Rouge Parish, the project incorporates modifications at LA 1 and I-10 westbound to include shoulder widening, acceleration and deceleration lane lengthening, an additional travel lane on I-10 westbound to LA 415, an auxiliary lane on I-10 eastbound from LA 415 to LA 1, and widening shoulders on Mississippi River Bridge approaches. No lanes will be added to the truss portion of the Mississippi River Bridge. In East Baton Rouge Parish, the following improvements are included in the project: Adding shoulders and ramp capacity from the Mississippi River Bridge to I-110; Lengthening the acceleration and deceleration lanes on I-10 for the Highland Road-Nicholson Drive interchange to the Mississippi River Bridge truss; Adding one travel lane on I-10 from I-110 to the I-10-I-12 split in both directions; Consolidating Washington and Dalrymple interchanges into one interchange with roundabouts at several interchanges; Closing and removing the Perkins Road exit and entrance ramps and lengthening ramps of the existing Diamond Interchange at Acadian, along with surface street improvements on Acadian; The dedicated exit ramp to College Drive allowing vehicles to exit westbound I-10 without merging into I-12 traffic is being processed separately under State Project Number H.013897 and is shown on the roll maps for informational purposes. The Washington-Dalrymple Consolidated Interchange provides roundabouts at Terrace, Washington, and East Lake Shore as the most efficient intersection design for traffic flow. The following section provides a compilation of key project findings. This slide is a comparative summary of potential impacts between the preferred alternative, which is the project, and the no-build alternative. You may view a full-size version of this summary table in the exhibit area. The next series of slides provide more detail relative to possible project effects. Throughout the area, landscaping and wetlands were mapped. Less than 10 acres of potentially jurisdictional wetlands were noted in the study area, along with numerous landscaped areas and significant trees. The majority of the wetland areas are located at the interchange of LA 415 and I-10 and between I-10 and I-12 at Essent Lane, where no construction is proposed. No potentially jurisdictional wetlands will be directly affected. However, less than 2/100 of an acre of other waters may be affected in the vicinity of College Drive. These other waters represent drainageways adjacent to I-10. Several locations supporting significant trees, beautification, and ecological enhancement projects installed and supported by Baton Rouge Green will likely be affected. Most of these areas are at interchanges and are shown on the Study Area Environmental Inventory Exhibits by green dots. The extent of the 100-year floodplain in the project area is shown on the Study Area Environmental Inventory Exhibits. Portions of I-10 are within the 100-year floodplain. Therefore, it was not possible to avoid these areas in their entirety. Approximately 1/2 acre of property considered to be within the 100-year floodplain may be affected. There are eight locations adjacent to the right-of-way that contain underground storage tanks or supported past activities, such as former gas stations or dry cleaners, that may require investigation to confirm the absence of contaminants. These areas are shown on the Study Area Environmental Inventory Exhibits as REC sites, or Recognized Environmental Condition Sites. As a result of the Cultural Resources Survey, two newly-defined historic districts and one multiple property submission were determined eligible for listing under the National Historic Preservation Act. They are the Proposed Old South Baton Rouge Historic District, Hundred Oaks Residential Historic District, and the Perkins Road Overpass Multiple Property Submission. There are two existing historic districts adjacent to I-10. They are the Beauregard Town and Eddie Robinson Senior Historic Districts. The Cultural Resource Survey identified 22 properties in the area of potential effect that are considered contributing elements to the Proposed Historic Districts and Multiple Property Submission. Seventeen of these properties will be adversely affected as a result of the project. No properties in the existing Beauregard Town or Eddie Robinson Senior Historic Districts were determined adversely affected. Minimizing impact to historic properties in the Proposed Districts and Multiple Property Submission area is a priority. Some measures to avoid and minimize adverse effects were considered and implemented as practical. Measures employed to reduce impacts included: reducing right-of-way, widening to the inside where geometry would allow, moving or providing connector roads to maintain access, and analysis of different interchange types, such as signals, stops, and roundabouts. Impacts to the 17 historic properties include likely acquisition and removal of all or a part of the structures. A draft Section 4F evaluation was prepared for the use of historic properties and can be found in Appendix H of the EA. Mitigation measures to be conducted for adverse impact to historic properties in the Proposed Old South Baton Rouge Historic District, Hundred Oaks Residential Historic District, and Perkins Road Overpass Multiple Property Submission include: vibration monitoring; development and provision of historic texts; historic district public information displays in Expressway Park and East Polk Street Park; historic markers in DOD right-of-way; recordation and documentation; and relocation of buildings within their respective districts as feasible. The project is expected to have a de minimis impact on five of the 22 properties identified in Proposed Districts. Four properties in the Old South Baton Rouge Historic District and Hundred Oaks Residential Historic District are not adversely affected by the proposed project as only small portions of the parcels of which the structures are apart are proposed to be acquired. The building at 2954 Perkins in the Proposed Perkins Road Overpass Multiple Property Submission has a porch that may be affected by acquisition of right-of-way and require removal, but the project avoids impacts to the historic building. Please check the exhibit area for a full-size view of these properties and the de minimis impact. The consolidation of the Washington-Dalrymple interchange is expected to result in a de minimis, or minimal, impact on East Polk Street Park as a result of the acquisition of approximately 4/100 of an acre of park property for additional right-of-way. The project is expected to have a de minimis impact on the trail around City Park Lake. Approximately 2/100 of an acre is anticipated necessary for additional right-of-way and temporary closures of the trail are expected during overhead construction. Use of the trail as a trail will not be permanently affected by the project. Analysis has determined that a majority of the corridor can be widened within the existing right-of-way that is owned by DOD at this time. Approximately 6 acres of additional right-of-way may be acquired, along with 3/10 of an acre of construction servitude to construct the project. In terms of potential acquisitions of structures that would be needed to implement the project, 28 residences and five businesses have been identified as anticipated acquisitions. Thirteen fully vacant lots, numerous partial parcels, and properties supporting five billboards may be acquired. Structures in the project area are shown on the Study Area Environmental Inventory Exhibit. Apparent existing and proposed rights-of-way are shown on the aerial exhibits of the Preferred Alternative in the Project Layout Station. As shown on the exhibits, the neighborhood of Old South Baton Rouge will be affected by right-of-way acquisition. This neighborhood is an environmental justice community, and properties with and without homes and businesses are located within the apparent right-of-way required. Mitigation measures will be implemented in and around this neighborhood. Additionally, gathering spaces and a new multi-use trail are proposed to enhance the community. A noise study was conducted to determine if noise impacts associated with the project would result in the need to consider noise abatement. The analysis identified noise barriers that are reasonable and feasible and can receive federal funding, as well as those that may be warranted but do not qualify for federal funding. For noise barriers that do not qualify for federal funding, a special state appropriation will be required. Noise barrier locations are color-coded on the Preferred Alternative maps to reflect those that qualify for federal funding, those that require a special state appropriation, and those that are existing. Please see the Preferred Alternative maps in the Project Layout Station for all barrier locations and heights. Areas identified for noise barriers determined to be reasonable and feasible, meaning they can be federally funded, are: For I-10 westbound: Dalrymple Drive to Washington Street along I-10 westbound, with an average barrier height of 13 feet; Christian Street to east side of City Park Lake along I-10 westbound, with an average barrier height of 13 feet; For I-10 eastbound: Big Street to the east side of City Park Lake along I-10 eastbound, with an average barrier height of 14 feet extending across the City Park Lake Bridge; the east side of City Park Lake to east of Christian Street along I-10 eastbound, with an average barrier height of 14 feet. Those areas with noise barriers that would require a special state appropriation have barriers proposed with an average height of 14 feet and include: Washington Street to Terrace Avenue along I-10 westbound; Across City Park Lake from east to west along I-10 westbound; On-ramp from Acadian Thruway to Christian Street along I-10 westbound; East Boulevard to Washington Street along I-10 eastbound; and Christian Street to the Kansas City Southern Railroad along I-10 eastbound. Some existing noise barriers will require relocation to allow for the additional travel lanes proposed under this project. Approximately 8,200 linear feet of existing noise barriers will be moved and reconstructed or replaced in kind once shifted. These barriers are mostly between Acadian and College. Moving of noise barriers will occur during the construction phase. Approximately 13,000 feet of existing noise barriers will remain in place as they are today. The majority of these barriers are located between College Drive and Essent Lane. We've talked about some potential project impacts, so it's time to talk about context-sensitive solutions, or CSS. FHWA defines context-sensitive solutions as a collaborative approach whereby transportation solutions are developed to fit within the context of their surroundings while taking into consideration the needs and desires of the community. DOD is proposing CSS designs in several locations along the I-10 corridor as part of this project. The Proposed Greenway Trail is a shared-use path to be constructed within I-10 right-of-way from 10th Street at Expressway Park to Dalrymple. For the first time, visitors to East Polk Street Park and those living in the neighborhoods of Old South Baton Rouge, Eddie Robinson Senior, and Beauregard Town will have a route to safely navigate via biking, walking, and jogging to Expressway Park, City and University Lakes, and City Park. An exhibit of this proposed trail is in the main exhibit area. DOD proposes a complete plan for the use of the area to be vacated by the removal of the Perkins I-10 ramps, including: The extension of Greenwood Drive as a two-lane roadway from its existing terminus to Perkins adjacent to the Acadian Village Shopping Center; A multi-use path from the Perkins Road Overpass to Perkins Road; A promenade and green space for community gathering; New parking areas; Restoration and improvement of existing parking areas, some of which have joint use agreements, or JUAs, under I-10 and currently under the off-ramp to be removed. Please see the exhibit area for the representative Perkins Road concepts. NARN Overpass Bridge will be replaced with a structure that enhances the transportation experience for all users, meaning it will accommodate vehicles, pedestrians, and cyclists, and have an aesthetic design. The NARN design incorporates a shared-use path on the east side and pedestrian-only path on the west side. Design options include the possibility for bumpouts, which are hard barriers between paths and the travel lanes; bike lanes in lieu of the multipath, keeping a pedestrian path on both sides; and for aesthetic screening and fencing for the bridge rail area. The bumpout concept allows for rest areas, green space, art space, or other amenities that may be beneficial. The paths across the bridge will connect NARN Park to a school and eventually to Baywell Street. NARN Bridge concepts are shown on an exhibit in the viewing area. The City Park Lake Bridges concept has been presented with two different design options that are both in harmony with the lake and future lake area enhancements. DOD encourages the public to comment on these design concepts. The bridge concepts are of a spandrel arch and haunched box and are on exhibit in the viewing area. Community Connections is an FHWA initiative to improve connections within communities affected by transportation facilities of the past. Ideally, Community Connections applies approaches that turn aging infrastructure into opportunities for re-establishing community connections and cohesion. In the spirit of reconnecting communities and restoring existing communities, DOD proposes Community Connections concepts in several locations along the I-10 corridor as part of the Proposed Project. These concepts incorporate shared-use paths, community gathering spaces, improved surface street connections, and improved parking and access for retail business area. Community connection concepts of shared-use paths are being proposed from Expressway Park to Dalrymple, or the Greenway Trail, on the reconstructed NARN Overpass Bridge, and along the Proposed Greenwood Extension, which is being considered from Expressway Park to the Mississippi River levee. Gathering spaces are also being considered for Expressway Park and are part of the promenade and green space proposed as part of the Perkins Road Context-Sensitive Solutions and Community Connections Concepts. Community connection concepts of connecting streets and providing increased access and parking are an integral part of the Perkins Road CSS Community Connections Concepts. They include extending Greenwood Drive to Perkins Road adjacent to Acadian Village Shopping Center, new parking areas, and restoration and improvements to existing parking under I-10 and under the Perkins Road off-ramp that will be removed. Please refer to the Perkins Road Concept Map in the exhibit area. CSS and Community Connections Concepts are part of the project and must be determined prior to developing the project's overall cost estimate. In planning for the implementation of the project, cost estimates are developed and refined incorporating the costs that are reasonably foreseeable. This slide demonstrates the probable cost of the total project. A complete explanation of the probable cost can be reviewed in the Line and Grade Document located in Appendix A of the EA. In January of 2018, the department announced availability of $360 million in future federal grant anticipation revenue vehicle bonds, or GARVE bonds, for the portion of the project from I-110 to the I-10-I-12 split. GARVE bonds allow the state to repay the debt with federal highway funds the state receives each year. More funding will be needed to complete all sections and phases of the project. Using the GARVE bonds should allow for funding of future sections as the first series of bonds released are repaid. As of this hearing, two sections of the project that demonstrated independent utility, that is, they can be constructed and function without the rest of the project in place, were advanced. These two now-independent projects include the Terrace Avenue Off-ramp, which opened to traffic on October 11, 2019, and the College Drive Flyover, which is in the beginning of the design-build stage. The completion of the planning and environmental stage, presumably with the issuance of a finding of no significant impact, or Fonzie, will allow the project to be advanced. Some sections will advance to final design and some right-of-way acquisition can be initiated. This is possible with the GARVE bonds in place, meaning the funding stage has been completed for a portion of the project. In terms of construction, the entire project will be built in sections and each section will be built in phases. These individual phases may last from six months to three years. Phasing will involve shifting traffic to one side of I-10 and then the other. Three lanes of traffic will be maintained in each direction during construction. This phasing approach is based on maximizing available funding sources while maximizing traffic flows during construction periods. DOD is committed to maintaining access for affected businesses and residential areas during construction. However, at certain times, access to some properties will be restricted. DOD is developing a mitigation plan to address this. Those entities with joint use agreements, or JUAs, for parking under I-10 are likely to have that parking affected at some point during this project. DOD will work with those affected on a case-by-case basis to address parking issues. Keeping you informed of changes in travel patterns associated with the various construction phases is a top priority. There will be multiple outlets for retrieving and/or receiving construction updates. These include: Digital message boards along I-10; Messages via the MyDOTD app; the Louisiana 511 app; the project website, www.i10br.com; the LADOTD website; and local news outlets. The remaining slides in this presentation outline the right-of-way acquisition and relocation process. Right-of-way acquisition and relocation information. A representative of the LDOTD Real Estate Section has a table here tonight and is available to answer any questions pertaining to LDOTD's Right-of-Way Acquisition and Relocation Assistance Program. The LDOTD brochure explaining the Acquisition of Right-of-Way The LDOTD brochure explaining the Acquisition of Right-of-Way and Relocation Assistance Program is available tonight at that table or can be obtained later from LDOTD Real Estate Section, PO Box 94245, Baton Rouge, Louisiana 70804-9245, and their numbers 2252424591. We suggest you read the brochure carefully. If you have any questions regarding your individual situation, consult with the agent when she or he meets with you or contact the region real estate office. It is the DOTD's policy to pay just compensation for all properties required for the project. Owners of required properties will be contacted by an appraiser to schedule an inspection. All appraisals will be reviewed and approved by DOTD. After review and approval, a right-of-way agent will contact each property owner and present a letter setting forth the amount of DOTD's cash offer for the purchase of the property. Advisory services shall include current and continuing information on the availability and prices of comparable decent, safe, and sanitary dwellings for displaced residents and federal and state programs offering assistance to displaced persons. Relocation assistance payments are separate and in addition to payments made by the department for the purchase of your property. These are moving expense payments, replacement housing payments, and business re-establishment expense payments. Moving expense payments will be made to any individual, family, or business in legal occupancy of the property either at the start of negotiations or at the time of purchase by the department. The amount of the payment to residential displacements will depend on actual costs supported by receipts or fixed costs based on room count. More detailed information is available beginning on page 13 of the brochure. Displaced businesses, farms, and nonprofit organizations may be paid the actual reasonable expenses of moving together with certain eligible costs incidental to the move. Some businesses may also be eligible for certain actual costs incidental to re-establishing their businesses. Instead of payment for moving expenses, some business owners may be eligible to receive a payment based on the average annual net earnings of the business. If the business meets the qualifications, this payment shall not be less than $1,000 or more than $40,000. Moving payment information for businesses may be found beginning on page 22 of the brochure. Replacement housing payments are also available to qualifying owners and tenants. Three of the basic requirements are as follows: First, you must be occupying the property at the start of negotiations. Second, you must have been there at least ninety days. And third, you must move into decent, safe, and sanitary replacement housing. The amount of your maximum supplemental payment will be given to you in writing. Additional requirements and payment limits may be found beginning on page 14 of the brochure. Certain owners and tenants not in occupancy for at least ninety days or who become occupants after negotiations have started may qualify for replacement housing payments. Two of the basic requirements are that you must have been in occupancy at the time the property was acquired by the department and you must move into decent, safe, and sanitary replacement housing. Applicants for a relocation payment have the right to appeal the department's determination of their eligibility for payment and/or the amount of payment. Appeals must be submitted to the right-of-way regional manager or right-of-way consultant project manager within sixty days after the applicant has been notified that his claim has not been approved. Final decisions on eligibility and payments will be made by the department's real estate administrator in Baton Rouge. Additional information on appeals may be found on page 26 of the brochure. To the greatest extent practicable, no person lawfully occupying real property shall be required to move without at least ninety days' written notice from the department. The notice will indicate the specific date the property must be vacated. No person lawfully occupying a dwelling will be required to move unless and until comparable, decent, safe, and sanitary replacement housing is made available within the general area of the project. The replacement housing must be available within a reasonable time prior to the scheduled move of the occupants and must be within the occupants' financial means. Replacement housing must be fair, open, and offered to all persons regardless of race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. Prior to the negotiating for purchase of your property, a representative of the department will personally contact and interview all persons who will be required to relocate. The benefits will be explained and a determination made of individual needs and intentions for relocating. A special word of caution: Relocation benefits cannot be paid until the property is acquired by the department. Before moving or purchasing replacement housing, contact the department to assure your eligibility and the prompt payment of your relocation benefits. If you move or purchase replacement housing without prior notification to the department, you risk losing all possible benefits provided by the Relocation Assistance Program. Thank you for your participation in this public hearing. Please visit the exhibits and preferred alternative maps in the Project Layout Station and talk with project team representatives to have your personal questions answered and leave your comments at the comment table in writing or verbally with the court reporter. Alternatively, public statements can be made tonight between 7:00 and 8:00 p.m. and will be recorded by the court reporter. Personnel will remain available to record comments during the public statement hour. Comments on the EA will be accepted through December 3, 2019. After tonight, comments may be provided via the project website at www.i10br.com, via email to info@i10br.com, and through the U.S. Postal Service, addressed to I-10BR Stage 1, Care of Franklin Associates, at 2148 Government Street, Baton Rouge, Louisiana 70806.